I said you made it through the winter, okay.
Yeah. At this point in time, I'm going to officially look at the information meeting of March third, twenty twenty five. About December one P M. And then it was planned down in my knowledge if you're wondering. Uh. My what did the morning there. I thought I think where. We start with some introductions, we'll start over here on my back. And we'll go across the front of the room. If only one of you audience would like to introduce themselves, we'll invite as well if you need.
He's at the White House, he's a.
I pray to your error and your public.
Mexico must face those terrorists because they have.
I'm Karen Jolo, I'm town clerk. I'm sorry, he's doing that.
I'm his keeper, I'm the town treasurer and assessor. Sorry, Lisa Keyward, town treasurer and assessor. They don't work.
I'm Tim Born, select board member.
Claire LaFloss, select board member.
Carl Raga, select board.
Phil Latimer, select board.
Harry Potter, select board.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to introduce themselves? If you want to speak now.
I'd like to introduce. Our new assistant town clerk, Lori Chalmers, or Jones, assistant town clerk.
Anyone else? The town will get started. Article one showed the voters authorized general fund expenditures to operation of plants of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand and one hundred and twelve dollars. With which seven hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars taken away by taxes. And hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred dollars by non-tax revenues. The change affecting the general fund budget this year, revenue decreased somewhere. This fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, net revenue decreased by five thousand eight hundred dollars over the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. It includes an increase of seven hundred dollars in interest on late payments and the liquid tax penalties. Increase of a thousand dollars in state revenue for equalization payments. Decrease of ten thousand dollars in interest revenue due to lower interest rates. Increase of a thousand dollars in bulk, bulk recovery. Increase of five hundred dollars in recreation program fees as a result of adding back the kayak camp. And an increase of three thousand one hundred dollars in zoning fee applications. Those numbers also reflect changes, um, expense increase to the general fund budget. Net expense increases of seventy-two thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars over the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five. There includes an increase of twenty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in computer managed services and service period. Increase of ten thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars in health insurance. Increase of six thousand three hundred eighty dollars for an additional five hours for the assistant town clerk. An increase of six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in Northwest Regional Planning Contracted Services. For the planning commission, development, review, and zoning administrator. An increase of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in towns function in place of the boardwalk at three blocks from natural area. A serving brand is awarded. Decrease of seven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars in community hall expenses due to a reduction in janitorial staff and supplies needed between payment. The cleaning of the building. And an increase of twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to maintain the proposed new fire station located at seventy-seven twenty U S R two. An increase of five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to maintain the town website. And an increase of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in taxes paid to Grand Island. Overall, the general fund budget for fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. Will see an increase of seventy-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars over fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five to be raised by taxes. Forty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four general fund surplus will be applied. The fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budget resulting in an increase in taxes of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars to be raised by taxes. That's seventy-eight thousand eleven and then minus the forty thousand. Are there any comments or questions regarding Article one of the general fund budget? Yeah. If no questions are coming, we move on to Article two. So voters authorized public works fund expenditures to operational expenses of four hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Of which three hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars should be raised by taxes. The eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars by non-tax revenue. Can you use effective the public works budget? And then revenue decrease of twelve thousand dollars. Including the decrease of two thousand dollars in interest revenue. And a decrease of ten thousand dollars in highway grant revenue offset by grant expenses. Net expenditures increased by thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Then increase includes thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars in public works personnel expenses. Due to an increase in health insurance in a living being used in community hall. Increase of one thousand two hundred and twelve dollars for computer managed services. Cyber security and computer software. An increase of nine thousand seven hundred dollars in highway maintenance. Ten thousand dollars which is retrieved to address the damage caused by the invasion of the Emerald Ash Mall. And a decrease of ten thousand dollars in road construction highway grant offset by grant revenue. Overall, the public works fund budget for fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six. Will see an increase of fifty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars over fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five to be raised by taxes. However, twenty-five thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four public works fund surplus. Will be applied to fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budgets resulting in an increase of twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars to be raised by taxes. Are there any questions or comments regarding Article two, the public works fund budget? Questions, comments, and move to Article three. So voters authorized cemetery fund expenditures for operational expenses of twenty-four thousand. Of which five thousand two hundred shall be raised by taxes and eighteen thousand eight hundred by non-tax revenues. Questions or comments regarding Article three? So there's one before the press is ready. Shall the voters authorized library fund expenditures for operational expenses eighty-two thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars? Of which seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-six shall be raised by taxes and six thousand three hundred and thirty by non-tax revenues. Any questions or comments regarding Article four? Article five, shall the voters appropriate thirty thousand dollars to the North Hero Volunteer Fire Department for needed equipment? Questions or comments regarding Article five? Article six. Shall the voters appropriate ten thousand dollars to the Grand Island County Municipal Aid Association? North Hero Volunteer Fire Department for their share of the emergency communication system, equipment, and dispatch. Questions or comments regarding Article six? Article seven. Shall the voters? Shall voters appropriate thirty-six thousand dollars to the Grand Island West Street operating capital expenses? Questions or comments regarding Article seven? Shall the voters appropriate ten thousand dollars to the partners for Bay Restoration Association? P B R A for the removal of aquatic nuisance weeds around the shores of North Hero during the winter. Years twenty-five, uh, home twenty-five, twenty-six. Questions or comments regarding Article eights? Questions or comments regarding Article eight? Article one, shall the voters appropriate seventy five hundred dollars to the University of Vermont Health and Health Institute, home health and hospice for reimbursed, uh, unimberged, unreimbursed care? Questions or comments regarding Article nine? Article ten, shall the voters appropriate four thousand dollars to the North Hero Historical Society? Questions or comments regarding Article ten? Article eleven, shall the voters appropriate two thousand dollars to aid well conservative that allow agents of honors to stay independent? Questions or comments regarding Article eleven? Article twelve, shall the voters appropriate fifteen hundred dollars to Northwest, to Northwest Unit for special investigations for ever stands and secular casualties? Questions or comments regarding Article twelve? Article thirteen, shall the voters appropriate three thousand ten dollars to the Mont Senate for independent living for showing before disabilities?
Three, three hundred and ten.
Three hundred and ten, sorry. Questions or comments regarding Article fifteen? I just see your management. Article fourteen, shall we can establish a reserve fund called the contingency reserve fund for the purpose of unanticipated operation in emergency situations that shall be funded with an initial deposit of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and forty six dollars, which represents a factor significantly fifty percent of our fiscal year twenty twenty six operating budget out of the general operating surplus, for so, for sewage of twenty four V S A, twenty eight oh four. Questions or comments regarding Article fourteen?
Do you have examples of what the contingency fund might be used for?
Happy to, um, to speak a little bit about this. Um, we actually were contacted by NBC five to talk about this specific provision on our warning. Um, a contingency reserve fund can be used for many different things. Um, but it's good to look at it in connection with the capital improvement fund that we also are are going in our capital improvement plan. So the capital improvement plan is going to be designed to make sure that we're budgeting ahead for, for big expenses and what it's likely going to result in is that we're carrying very little surplus because the monies that come in at the end of every year are going to be allocated to the capital improvement project. The contingency reserve fund is going to be there in case there are unexpected expenses that affect the municipality that have not been budgeted for as part of the C I P or our normal budgeting process. It could be a natural disaster. It could be the emergency replacement of necessary equipment. Um, it could be any number of things that aren't part of our standard budgeting process. And through the implementation and discussion of this plan, um, the ranges that were recommended by folks that the municipality spoke with to to help draft this initial policy, they said those, the numbers range between ten and twenty percent of your operating expense for the year in question. So we decided to set aside a specific number to see if fifteen percent was too much or too little. This is the first year of the plan and um, we decided not to set a firm percentage based policy in place now so that we can really see what the town needs in terms of having this money in place to cover a little some expected expenses.
I was wondering if the town has any significant exposure to potential loss of federal funds? Do we get much revenue that would affect us in that way?
Uh, well, I think if you look at the hard work that's been done by many of the people here on the select board and, and over by our treasurer and our town clerk and members of the water board, uh, Andy Olling, um, we have received significant federal funding and grants uh, for some major infrastructure improvement projects and
We have it.
Uh, we have been awarded.
It's been banked.
No, we don't have, we don't have dollars and poppers yet. Um, so, you know, the, I think the uncertainty about federal funding streams is affecting everybody. I think this board, uh, and, uh, and many of the other municipal subdivisions of the town have been forward looking to try and ensure that we don't opt to rely solely on those kinds of monies to, uh, to achieve what we believe are the best objectives for the taxpayers here. So.
So the contingency fund is not necessarily due to uncertainty about
No, this is, this is a piece of planning that we believe is going to be importantly dovetailed with the capital improvement plan. Um, so that, uh, because in previous years we've had questions, why, why do you have money on the books? Right? Why is this being turned to taxpayers? Well, one of the reasons why is because we believe it's responsible to be prepared for those unexpected situations that arise from time to time. Ramon has seen several natural death. Few years flooding has been, um, uh, devastating in many parts of our state. And so when we have a contingency reserve fund, we are able to quickly mobilize those dollars locally to help stabilize necessary infrastructure here in our town.
Thank you. I happen to think it's a good idea, but I wasn't sure exactly what it was for.
Sure. What, what's the plan going forward? Is it next year more of the same or at some point?
No. Right. That's, that's kind of the plan and I don't want to, I don't want to kind of capitalize this discussion. So if anyone else wants to chime in, that's fine, but what we're trying to do is find the right percentage of our overall annual budget to hold there. And so if our annual budget goes down, right, and if we've eventually moved to a percentage based contingency reserve fund, if that fund has excess, then, um, our policy is going to be designed when we design it to make sure that those dollars are used where they're needed within our budget. And for example, if we fund it at this fifteen percent level, but we don't need to rely on it, there's not going to be an ask next year for another two hundred and thirty thousand, right? It'll stay static. If we spend money, we're going to want to replenish that fund to make sure that we're at a healthy level so that when these events do arise, if they do arise, that there is a safety net there.
We don't ask for all that money every year.
I hope not.
We try to hold on to whatever we have.
Yeah.
And if it has to be supplemented, of course, I'm going to need to supplement it.
Yeah, sure. And if the fifteen percent, uh, you know, appears to be too much and if there, if there are other, uh, projects, uh, we always have the ability to look at that number again and change the percentage by which we fund the contingency reserve fund. We can always modify it in the future.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article fourteen? Article fifteen, shall the town fund the north station building replacement fund with seventy thousand dollars of highway fund surplus for the purpose of replacing on failing town drive in accordance with twenty four V S A twenty eight oh four? Comments, questions regarding Article fifteen? Article sixteen, shall the town fund the library capital fund with fifty thousand dollars of library operators surplus to be used for capital improvements in accordance with twenty four V S A twenty eight oh four? Questions and comments?
Just to clarify, this is money that the library already has and, um, that will be used for things like the basement renovation. Um, it's just having people authorize us to, to use it. We have a water fountain, a base of, uh, more renovation. Can you maybe move to add one? That's, it's like, you know, a lot of local improvements we need to make over time. Sorry, let's see, we're not, we're not hearing any news. Oh, I just wanted to clarify this is a, you got a word here. So this particular one is to just allow the library to use funds that they already have, not asking for more money from the public. Um, for things like more renovation and basically.
Any other questions or comments on Article seventeen? Article seventeen, shall the voters authorize the select board pursuant to twenty four V S A one J six one B to contain a, through the day of one point six six acre vacant parcel and station road to Jameson New York for five thousand dollars, providing an easy to be for municipal water, I mean, is that pretty of a plan and sale? Only two questions regarding Article seventeen. All the purposes required by law. Modeler for term of one year, select board for term of three years, select board even for term of two years, minister for term of three years, cemetery commissioner for term of five years, library trustee for a term of four years, library trustee for a term of three years, library trustee for a term of three years, first constable for a term of one year, planning commissioner for a term of three years, planning commissioner for a term of three years, planning commissioner for a term of three years. There is, comments or comments regarding Article eighteen? The bottom line. The estimated municipal tax rate. You have any questions? I'll turn it over to the researcher or to the platform. But at the end of the day, uh, municipal, municipal tax rate is will be increased by four point six seven percent. Questions or comments?
I assume that that's not. I was a little confused by the um, contract of the sheriff's department being subsumed into someplace in the budget. I don't know where.
No, it was put into public safety.
Okay.
And what it was there is that I guess all along, what we had been doing is that we were appropriating funds for the sheriff's department. Uh, not per se entering a contract. Meaning there that all these previous years, they could have said, hell with us and just taken the money that we appropriated to them and spending it on whatever. So it was brought to our attention there that we're actually entering into a contract so that we need to, uh, we had to sign, you know, a contract authorized to sign the contract with them and therefore that went into the public safety part of the, uh, annual report.
So it's now up to you to monitor the sheriff's department as a part of the voters. And did you review their budget? Cause I couldn't find it online.
You didn't buy it online? Uh, we had the contract there. We had the contract that was provided to us.
Well, I, I know they provided you a contract. But my question was, have you seen their budget?
No, as far as, as far as what the spending, spending the stuff on.
They always have and stuff like that.
Right.
No, my.
I mean, I mean, it, it seemed, I have to say, it seemed suspect when that was taken away from the voters this year after all of the unpleasant things that came out about the sheriff's department this time.
I think to echo what Carl was saying, um, this was actually an act to protect the voters by not having it be a ballot initiative where we were appropriating money and having voter approval to simply pay that dollar amount for the sheriff's department. Um, we include it now as part of our overall budget and it's a contract for services rather than, uh, rather than a flat appropriation. And because it's a contract for services, um, we don't need to worry about the dispute that may arise if, for example, uh, there is an issue lodged against the department for not providing the services that are required to be tendered. And then having to wonder about whether or not we can get all of the remaining dollars back. Um, because the voters approved paying the full dollar figure. Um, I think, uh, I think it's also important to say that the voters still do have a voice in terms of who the town contracts its services with. And if the voters, uh, in North Hero want to bring an issue to the select board because of what they have experienced or what they have seen, they should do so.
Well, that was my question. So the question's now voting you instead of the sheriff's department.
They can go to vote. I, I think that, uh, nothing in the change in the way that we have presented the cost associated with police services in terms of our overall budget, uh, has changed a taxpayer's ability to bring a grievance directly to the sheriff's department or bring a grievance directly to the select board. Uh, both of, both of those options are still available to all taxpayers.
Select board has a liaison to the, the select board has a liaison to the sheriff's department being Mr. Latimer here. Um, so, you know, so I mean, if you have questions there about the sheriff's department, you can either ask the sheriff's department or you ask the select board here and Joe would take care of that.
And I did scrutinize their budget to a T last year and I went through all their insurance.
That's what I.
What they're paying out insurance, all, you know, uh, I went through the average salaries in the state for sheriff's deputies and we sat down and we discussed all of it. And I really didn't find any inconsistencies in what, what, what they were asking for last year.
Okay. For the counter appropriation walk this year to the sheriff's department?
Yes, well, last, last year, uh, well, twenty twenty four was eighty thousand, eighty. It went up to, it's going up to eighty one thousand, uh, six eighty one, so six hundred, sixteen hundred dollars.
Last year they had, I think, a sixteen percent increase, pretty significant, I would say.
Remember hearing last year that we have contracted them for six days out of the week and not on Sundays. Is that true? Um, and and asked, will they be on the road seven days a week or what? Or, we're going to do a certain number of days a year.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty two hours, I believe, twenty two hours a week that we contract with them for. So, and no, it is not, as far as I'm aware, it's not seven days a week, you know?
And it's not at night?
It's not at night, right. I think they, they close, they close up at like five.
Kind of, something so.
So.
You need help after that.
And that's, that's where the, the, uh, state police takes over from there.
Yeah. And, and I'll also say too that, you know, we have received requests or suggestions that we increase the hours of service um, from, in time to time. Uh, but we are trying to be, um, very conscious of those additional dollars and how it impacts all of your tax bills. And, uh, an increase in hourly coverage on a weekly basis will also have a commensurate increase in the contract price with the sheriff's department. That's also dependent on them being fully staffed and for many years they have struggled with, um, maintaining a full staff. There have been several years when they have been unable to fulfill even the contract, uh, hours that we have negotiated. And so in those instances, they only bill us for the hours they were able to patrol in North Hero. So, you know, it's, uh, it's a complicated, um, it's a complicated problem uh, or complicated question. I hope it's a problem, but we do have a local police service. They're supposed to be patrolling the entire county and um, I don't think, uh, I'm relatively certain they don't have enough manpower to seven day a week coverage for all of our towns and grand our towns. So. That was part of the reason for the increase last year was they found that they weren't competitive with other sheriff's departments, which looking at their numbers, they really weren't. So trying to bring people from outside the islands to the islands to work and at the salaries that, uh, the sheriff makes, it is sometimes it's hard to find people that want to commute to the islands or live in the islands because of the location.
And I believe it was, uh, yeah, eleven, eleven percent of the calls for North Hero. That's why we always, we look at there when people say, well, we need more hours for patrolling and whatever. Um, out of the entire county there, we make up out of the five towns, we make up eleven percent of the calls. Uh, Grand Isle makes up, I believe, thirty percent. Albert makes up thirty percent. Isle of Monte is at about eight percent and South Hero makes up the, the balance. So we're, we're quite a safe town.
We made ourselves, we don't need the cops as much.
Well, let's hope not.
Yeah.
Anything else to comment? Capital improvement program, C I P, capital improvement program provides a blueprint for planning of communities' capital expenditures. It is one of the most important responsibilities of the local governing officials. Recording community planning, financial capacity, physical development. The capital program provides guidance, procedures, and policy. What does our C I P consist of? North Hero C I P is composed of two parts, the capital plan and capital budget. The capital plan is the community planning and fiscal management tool that spans five years. The capital budget is the upcoming year's spending plan for capital items. Uh, that is the beginning of the latest, latest project for the school area. Capital improvement plan committee, town of North Hero, capital improvement, both are expected to update. The C I P committee has established all operating policy and procedural sites and documents for full implementation of the capital improvement program. Created the first five-year capital improvement plan and five-year annual capital improvement budget. When you review our annual capital improvement budget, you will see that North Hero has two projects. The largest project, water line replacement, has been in planning process for quite a long time. The water line replacement will be funded by existing revenues. The other two major, the other two projects will also be funded by existing reserves or funds that have been earmarked for those projects. No additional capital or funds are required for those projects. Following the adoption of the budget, the C I P committee will repeat the eleven steps to implement and effect a special program in preparation for the next year's budgetary setting. Questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Can you spell that last line of your equation? The larger project is the water line replacement. And then one is your second project. There are two other projects that will be funded.
Article four five, under A L, on the court, but it's been a prime year.
Very loud.
Start.
Yeah.
Most of us carried that.
Yeah. So for this year that we're in, we have planned the water storage town and then the fire station.
Those are the other two projects. Before closing, there are general questions and comments. In that case.
Hey, Ray. What is that actually, the water power, uh, plant, new water has done?
Andy, would you like to answer that?
Um, we've just awarded a construction contractor a large origin name. Uh, the, what drives the schedule to the main factory is the pain. That's scheduled to be, uh, fabricated by July, August, so that's when the contractor will move on site, do the site work, build the foundation. Our current schedule is altered to be, be complete November of this year.
So we have our funds available.
But okay, that's, it's a two point two million dollar project. We're getting nine hundred and forty thousand dollars to the state, we're all qualified, which is thirty year long, zero percentage. That's a pretty good deal. Um, we're getting four hundred thousand dollars to, uh, what was part of the funding a couple of years ago, a couple hundred thousand dollars from our reserve fund and five hundred thousand dollars through U S B A. That would be the question, Mark. They assured us that money is there for us. It was actually a correction to direct spending, so we don't believe there's an issue with that, but can't say anything.
So if you don't get the U S B A funding.
But we, we have a lot of our.
Then, then it will come out and.
I'd like your bond vote to figure any of the calculations. Last year's bond vote, I have that figure in the calculations. Uh, we, uh, bond vote was for one point eight million dollars that we got to pay. So we only had to end up borrowing half of nine hundred and forty dollars to save.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank all of the volunteers. An amazing town. And, and one final round of applause for everyone at that table.
All right.
Just a reminder, the polls open tomorrow, March fourth, twenty twenty five, from seven hundred and seven P M. The vote will be by our strings out here in the upper level of the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.